I'm Mike Luxembourg, the Acting Chair. And before we get started, what I'd like to do is to explain my role and Commissioner Richardson's new role. So let me start with that. I think, as everybody knows, Kathy's term of office expired at the end of January. But she has been extended by the City Council for two months, and she's going to focus during those two months on the handoff of the ECA recommendations. So while Kathy is doing that, I will be the Acting Chair until we have elections next month and we elect new officers. And unfortunately, Kathy's with us this evening, and that's not unfortunate, but this is going to be her last meeting. And since it's going to be her last meeting, I thought we should say some appropriate things. Because I think it's appropriate to recognize Kathy's work over the last year and earlier on the Commission and her leadership. And I recognize that she is going to be a highlight to follow. Her skill at running a meeting has been pretty obvious, for those of us who've been sitting up here and those of you sitting in the audience. She was firm but fair. She made sure that everybody was heard. And she had a particularly knack for summarizing what each of us said in a way that made it more understandable and also built consensus. That's a pretty hard act to follow. And everybody knows those things because we all saw them and we all heard them. But there's some things you don't know.
Oh, no.
So I thought I would share some of those this evening. You know, the meetings run as well as you think they run. Everybody will have their own opinions on that, but they don't run by themselves. Kathy has spent countless hours making sure that things run well. There's a great deal of prep work that has to be done. And Kathy has put in the time. Lots of emails. Most of them are sent early in the morning, because Kathy was a morning person. Some are sent late at night. A few are sent during the day, but not very many. We also had a lot of prep meetings. She wanted to make sure we were organized and we had our act together. Lots of meetings. I don't know where she found the time, to tell you the truth. She had a busy life. Lots of other things were going on. But when something needed to be done for the Commission, it got done. Kathy made sure it got done. So Kathy, on behalf of my fellow Commissioners and also the citizens of Sammamish, thank you for your leadership and a job well done.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. So I will just leave it at that.
Okay. I told Kathy I wasn't going to embarrass her too much.
Thank you. You succeeded.
Okay. And while this is Kathy's last meeting, we have two new members of the Commission. It's their first meeting. So I want to welcome Philip Cherian and Manuel Soto. Welcome. They'll get a chance to introduce themselves a bit later in the meeting. So now let's get to the business at hand. The first thing is roll call. We'll start with Commissioner Collins on the left.
Mike Collins, I'd like to congratulate Susan Cesar, who's going to be in charge of coordinating the bike trail with King County. And also, if any of you are interested in being on the management team for the Sammamish State, Lake Sammamish Stake Park, they're holding a meeting this week to get organized. They're going to be doing a publicly-run management team there, and I really hope there's a lot of Sammamish representation on that.
Say your name, sir.
Manuel Soto.
Kathy Richardson.
Mike Luxembourg.
Ryan Coleman.
Philip Cherian.
Bobo Bole Islam. Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion now to approve the agenda.
So moved.
We'll hear second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. Next thing is to approve the minutes for October, excuse me, January 24th. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Next thing on the agenda is public comment. I would suggest we have members of the public, if you want to talk about the ECA, you might want to hold your comments until the end of the meeting, after we do the retrospective. Although you're welcome to talk now, up to you.
You will have a chance.
No, you will have a chance, after the retrospective. Okay, with that, let me ask each of our new Commission members to introduce themselves, starting with Mr. Soto. I caught you with your mouth.
Yes, exactly. You caught me when I was eating the cookie. I'm Manuel Soto. I am a resident of Sammamish. I've lived here for over five years. I have a wife and two kids. There are two boys, they're 11 and 5, and one is going to Inglewood Middle School, the other one is going to Sammamish Children's School, two kindergarten. And then next year, he'll go to Mead. I live across the street from Mead Elementary in the Inglewood Hills area. I come from South America, from Chile. I've been living in the States for 13 years, and I've been working in urban planning and more in transit design and planning for the last 10 years.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cherian.
Hi, my name's Philip Cherian. I have lived in Sammamish for nine years now. Very similar to Manuel, I have a wife and two kids, one boy, one girl. The boy's four and my daughter is 18 months old. My wife teaches at Blackwell Elementary, and I work at a startup in Bellevue. Prior to this, I used to work at Amazon.com, and I was joking with some of the other Commissioners that the expertise I'd be bringing as software engineering to the table, so.
You'd be amazed how applicable some of those things can be.
Next, Cameron, if you'd talk about the work program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll note for the record, Commissioner Lipinski is absent tonight. I think we'd call it an excused absentee, noted that he would be absent for our meetings in February. Looking ahead to 2013 and 2014, I hope everybody got a chance to get a copy of the schedule. We're back on to the landscape-style Excel spreadsheet schedules. We had some updated versions. Debbie, did we get those out? You got one sent to you last Friday. This has been updated since then, so please refer to this one. We're starting to populate the rows here with different work program items and schedule of time. The next item that's really going to come before the Commission is the transportation level of service. And recall from previous joint meetings with the City Council in 2012, that's an area of interest for the Council, and essentially you have a request to help look at some options for revising that level of service. Council has given the Commission and the staffs some policy direction, which we're going to compile and present to the Commission. I won't get into the substance of the topic here tonight, but you do have some policy direction to follow, which is often handy, that will help focus the work of the Commission. So we'll start with an introduction session at your next meeting on the 21st. You'll get material for this meeting on the 21st as normal, the previous Friday, and I believe that's the 15th. We've shown two sessions kind of going into introduction, and if memory serves, I'm not sure there are any Commissioners currently impaneled here that were around in 2006, when we did this at that time. And it was quite a, probably as big of a level of effort as you've just completed with ECA. We went through for the transportation level of service, concurrency, and impact fees at that time. So you'll be looking at all that same material again, not having to reinvent it, but make policy adjustments. And those adjustments, as you always realize, have ripple effects and implications. So it is a lot of material, and we've identified at least two sessions to kind of give the Commission a thorough grounding in the subject matter. Our public works staff, Laura Fairpott, the Director, Jeff Bronze, our City Engineer, and our consultant, David Evans and Associates, will be taking the lead to work you through this. Susan and I, of course, will be working with them, attending these meetings and working with them in between. And you may see one of the planning staff pitch in at some point along the way. The Public Works is really going to be kind of taking the lead in terms of staffing the Planning Commission process. You'll also see the consultant, as I mentioned. The other item that's starting to show up on this list is the Title 24. It's labeled comprehensive plan.
Cameron, before we move to Title 24, I'm noticing that for our next meeting, we have two Commissioners who are not going to be here.
We do.
Can we think about how we might deal with bringing them up to speed?
Sure. And our standard mechanism, of course, is that these meetings are videotaped, and they should, when they have the time, watch those tapes. And staff are available at any time to help answer further questions. So we'll do what we can to fill in the blanks and make sure that when they come back on the 7th, they feel comfortable enough to speak.
Thank you.
Any other questions on transportation before? I should have asked for that before I moved into the next subject. Hearing none, I'll go into the comprehensive plan.
I'm sorry, Cameron. Have we put public notice out on this yet? Is that in the newspaper? I saw a small article in the review, but it didn't have dates.
Yeah. And when we were at the City Council, they gave policy direction. We didn't have the Planning Commission dates. And of course, we try to let people know about our meetings in a variety of different ways. I believe transportation, planning, and level of service is one of the little buttons you can click on to get the Gov. Delivery alerts. So I encourage anybody who's really interested in this topic, that's our best method of staying in touch with you. When we get to your public hearings, we will first certainly go through the formal notice process as well. So on the comprehensive plan Title 24, the city's municipal code is divided into titles. Title 24 happens to be the one whereby we adopt our comprehensive plan and the process by which we amend it. That title we inherited from King County. I deal with code a lot and somewhat chewy language. This is a chewy piece of language. So we're looking to kind of tailor this code for Sammamish. There may be some ways to simplify it, make it, while still making sure it complies with state law and what we need to do for our own local process. So you haven't seen any material on that yet, and we're still working through some internal review before we're ready to present it to you. The other item that I'll show in there is the 2013 docket. There were several things put on the docket. Some of them will in fact be ripe for decision this year. One of them is the transportation level of service. You're already starting on. Another is a proposal made by Greg Kip. Those of you from last year remember his comments before the Planning Commission, so we'll be coming back to that. Last thing I'll note is that you will, as the Chair noted, we have under your bylaws, bylaws, a process to nominate and then elect new officers. So you're going to get along with just a Chair, I think, until we're done with those elections. And I think we can safely do that. But once we have the elections, you'll be electing a new Chair and a new Vice Chair for the Commission.
May I suggest that Mike may get sick and that we might want to just have a backup plan to Mike being the Chair?
We'll find a way. If that's your own self-nomination, I guess that's a...
I would suggest Ryan Coleman as the backup.
Naturally, because I'm sitting to the right.
Correct.
You're the right-hand man. Right there.
To my right or you're not on my left?
No.
I'm just worried about Mike Collins' comments. Don't drink the water.
Why I always sit way off to the fellas' right.
Without objection, we'll see if Commissioner Coleman will be going to serve if called upon. We'll only have a couple of meetings to go then, and we'll handle elections as we have before. You'll go, essentially Debbie will provide the mechanism by which people can nominate themselves or another Commissioner. You are the electorate there, the seven of you, and we'll see who gets into office. And then probably not much more to talk about in terms of that calendar. What I'm not showing on that calendar yet is probably the big item that we're working on in the department, starting to work on, which is our 2015 comprehensive plan rewrite, which is a very large endeavor. Appreciate that new Commissioners Soto and Cherian will be able to help us push this bigger rock uphill. The city has a comprehensive plan, it's Vintage 2003. We have a requirement under state law to update that, and our deadline is mid-2015. So we're working right now at a staff level to lay out a process for doing that. Will take the better part of two years plus to get that done, between public Commission work and the City Council. And so stay tuned, more to come on that subject as we get a plan rolled out. The other thing I thought I might offer comments on relates to the City Council Retreat. And Mr. Chair, can I go into that?
Please.
Cut. Last weekend, the City Council held its annual retreat, and they go offsite for the retreat. There are times when members of the public attended, and this time, nobody from the public attended. It is an open public meeting, so people can attend that. The City Council often has a retreat that focuses on elements of the city's work program, and it's a very large work program. Each department builds a work program, includes it in a notebook, and in years past, we've been going through all the elements of the notebook. So it gives the Council a very clear flavor of all the different things that we're working on. This year, we did something a little bit different. We instead focused the first day where staff were participating on the process and the our ability to work together well as a Council and as a senior staff team. In a sense, very similar to what the Planning Commission went through in its offsite retreat in last fall. And I think it's a good thing. If we're going to deliver on the work program, and there are very complex, sometimes very controversial items, the Council and the senior staff have to work together well. Even if we do work together well, there's ways that we can find to improve. So as a good management practice, we engaged in some team building during that day. And I think it was a good use of time. People got to know each other better. We identified some ways in which Council processes maybe hadn't been ideal in terms of how they went about their work, and we've got some ideas to make for improvement. And I say that especially because you're going to have a retrospective discussion here tonight at the Commission, looking back at your process going through the ECA, dominated everything you did in 2012, and asking essentially the same questions that we asked at the Council Retreat, focused on that one item. So I'm glad to see both bodies going through kind of a check-in process and a "how can we do better next time" process. So that was Friday, and on the Saturday, we went back to talking about work program items. Two of the three related to my department. One was the ECA process, and we wanted to give a foreshadowing of what the Council would see in terms of the Planning Commission's recommendations. And I'll note for the record, prior to this meeting, Kathy Richardson and Mike Luxembourg met with the Mayor and Deputy Mayor and the City Manager and me to go over the environmentally-critical areas process and the handoff that's going to take place next Tuesday at the City Council. So we had a chance to talk a little bit about it at the retreat. We've used our regular leadership meeting to also talk about it, and then we're going to be executing that next Tuesday. Commission knows under your bylaws, your Chair is empowered to speak for the Commission. Once the Commission has formalized its recommendation, we now have that material. Chair and the Vice Chair will represent you at the Council next week. And the other subject we talked about at the retreat that related to my Department of Community Development was our Economic Development Strategic Plan that we're getting started with this year. And I don't want to take the time to go through this in detail. We'll come back at another meeting and give you a little bit more of a detailed briefing. But the City of Sammamish did allocate some resources to initiate an economic development plan, and probably address things like how to help the Town Center get launched and see new development there where it's been planned in years past, and other things that will help local businesses and local customers. I'm excited for this. We'll be going through a consultant selection process, and there could be things out of that plan that both find their way into our new comprehensive plan rewrite, and they could influence future changes to policies or regulations, which would need to come back to the Planning Commission. So that will be an important kind of goal-setting document. This is the aim and the ready-fire aim. Ready, aim, fire.
You want the correct order.
We often do that, ready-fire aim. We want to try to do ready, aim, fire. This is the aim part in that. Okay. So that concludes my remarks on the look ahead. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Cameron. I think I'd like to add on one thing in relation to giving the Commission feedback. At our last meeting, we talked about some changes to the code, and we gave staff some direction to make updates to the code. And Commissioner Coleman, Commissioner Richardson, and myself met with the staff to review that, and I wanted to give everyone on the Commission feedback as to how that session went. I thought it went very well. Evan had prepared the material in advance. We'd had a chance to look at it. He had everything pretty much as discussed. There were a few things that we suggested changes to. Those changes have been made. The code now is in the shape that I, you know, we think it needs to be in to go forward to the Council. But let me also give Commissioners Coleman and Richardson a chance to comment if they'd like.
I have nothing to add.
No, thanks, Mike.
From a process standpoint, because we're just about to get into that, I would say that the idea of not trying to write the code as a committee in the meeting, I thought was probably a good idea. And the process of asking, giving policy direction and then supervising and looking at it after the fact were just fine.
Are you going to say that again at the retrospective, or do you want us to write that down now?
No, I'll say it again.
Okay, thank you. They'll say it again, it's okay.
So with that, I think we'll move on to our next item, which is the retrospective. And for this particular item...
Cameron, here, one quick interjection, Mr. Chair. We showed an ECA handoff summary, which you talked a little bit about, some of the work that's been done to get that ready. Wanted to just note that we printed off hard copies for the Commission, and we probably have a couple of extra copies around. The transmittal memo and some other key documents that are being sent to the City Council in their packet tomorrow. So this is same information that you'll see up on the web, and if you're, again, logged into Gov. Delivery, you'll get an email prompt that says this is available. The transmittal memo, I think, is one of the key documents there. Went through a lot of iterations to make sure it accurately reflected the Commission's decision process. So this for yours to keep and read over and fondly remember the ECA in the weeks to come.
And I would say that those particular documents were both early-morning emails and late-evening emails.
Yes. Yes, they were.
Our next item is the retrospective, and for that item, I'm going to turn over to Commissioner Richardson, who is going to lead us in it.
Great. Before we get into the retrospective, I just want to share a little bit more information with the Commission about the transmittal and handoff process. So what's been provided to you today, as Cameron said, is what will be provided to the Council and the public as part of the Council packet. I will note that on the third page of the transmittal memo or the handoff memo, there's a list of documents that are not being provided in advance. They'll be provided kind of at the meeting. And included in that is the Planning Commission draft of the code that we're recommending the Council consider adopting. So you can look through that. I think we're trying very hard to kind of dole out information in consumable portions for the Council, given what we've been through, and there is quite a bit of documentation to go through. Also being presented and discussed at that meeting will be the Council's schedule and calendar for their process for reviewing and adopting the ECA code. So if you're interested in that, I don't believe the schedule's been published yet, but that information will be shared shortly. And both the Acting Chair and myself will continue to represent the Commission in those Council meetings and discussions, you know, to the best of our ability. And I, you know, appreciate the fact that you are trusting us to do that, as I said, to the best of our ability. But are there any questions about the handoff or the transmittal? Commissioner Collins?
Are you guys going to be available for the Council to ask questions?
We will be available. Yes, we are planning to attend the Council meetings where the ECA is being discussed, either at a study session. Not sure about the public hearings, if we'll specifically be there for that, but definitely for the prep work moving, leading up to that.
As for the SMP, it would have been nice to have some...
Continuity.
Planning Commission members there to answer some of the questions.
Yes, both the Acting Chair and myself are committed to providing that level of continuity for the Council, and they've asked for that, and I think we're looking forward to that. Any other questions about the handoff? I would also like to recognize there were several minority reports that are also included. And, you know, I just want to thank those Commissioners that took the time to do that. I know that that was a pretty quick turnaround, and so thank you very much for enabling us to complete the packet on time. I really appreciate that. All right. With that being said, we have some, I very much appreciate, staff has volunteered to capture our input. And for the new Commissioners, you're welcome to provide input or ask questions, but I won't necessarily call on you explicitly, so let me know if you have something that you'd like to share, because we all bring different experiences to this process. But we really, now that we've kind of spent a year with this process, before we kind of put it back into the slower-access portion of our memory, we wanted to capture kind of what really worked well, what we might try to do differently, what, you know, in retrospective, you know, in retrospect, maybe we thought was going to work well but didn't, or if there's something kind of throughout the process that, oh darn, I wish we would have done this sooner, or in addition, to kind of capture some of those things. And so we'll go through kind of down the lineup, what I want, process point. We'll go through each question. Each Commissioner will have an opportunity to provide input. We'll kind of do this a little bit of brainstorm and get them all on the flip chart, and then have a little bit more dialogue. I do not expect everyone to agree. And so one Commissioner might think something went well, and another Commissioner might think it really didn't. And that's okay, because it's good to kind of capture. So I'll pick on the public comment amount of time for a minute. I think that's an example of something where we've had differences of opinions on the Commission, and I think that's just fine. So we'll start out with, what went well? What, you know, tools, processes, et cetera? And if it went well, would you like to use it again? I think those are perhaps two flavors or two aspects of the question. And I'll start with actually Commissioner Islam on this question.
I'm assuming you're looking for the response to the first question?
Yes. Thank you.
I think even though it was in the late part of our process, as a Commission, we met offsite, doesn't necessarily mean outside this building, but not during the meeting. We met offsite, having a facilitator that helped us to create some cohesiveness within the group, have a better understanding of our decision process, and some thoughts about how we would move forward. I think that was really helpful. Even though this question is not necessarily asking it, but I would say at this point, if we could do it in future, early in the process, not necessarily toward the end of the process, that kind of get-together, that would be really helpful. You know, I am of the mind that we are all on the same team, but at the same time, we are seven different individuals, so it is always helpful to build that team approach early in the process. I also appreciate Commissioners whole and the staff, the very early in the process creating a success criteria. And going through the success criteria, we were also able to come up with evaluation process, the tool, that evaluation forms that we have used. While I may have a different idea or thoughts about the criteria and the form, but I truly appreciate having the form, at least some objective form of and consistent process of us giving our input. So that was really helpful, and that's something I would probably like to see in future, too. I also thought Commission really did a hard job, probably 25-plus meetings that we have had over just a period of time. I really appreciated Commissioners' attendance in those meetings and really willing to sit through the entire meeting for so many meetings. So I think when we come across an issue like ECA or ComPlan or others, we will require that level of engagement, attendance, and attentiveness. So I truly appreciate that. So, I truly appreciate that, but that's also a burden that we all, as commissioners, as citizens, are willing to take. It's really a needed burden on our part. Other than that, I would say we had a good, healthy level of debate. We, at least going back to ECA, I felt that providing the technical documentation early enough was very helpful, but at the same time, it was so early in the process and then we had another six or eight months, we went through the process, so some of us may not have had the same level of edge toward the end about the depth of the technical information and not having access to those scientists or consultants toward the middle or late step of the process. At least we didn't have the direct access, but we, of course, had access through written questions and written responses. But I would think for future, that would be helpful if we get into that kind of subject matter, we should have experts available throughout the commission work.
Would that be on one of the other sheets to do something differently?
Yeah, I'll probably come back and, with that, I will stop and I'll let others have the opportunities.
Commissioner Chair, do you want any to contribute to this at this point?
No.
Great. Commissioner Coleman?
I would agree. I think the concept of the evaluation forums was helpful. It gave us a basis to craft that policy and come back to it and check ourselves against it, you know, are we on the right path? Are we saying what we actually mean and are we going to implement it that way? And like I said, it was the concept, I think, but, you know, there's, there's a good thought process there and it's probably, in the way we use it for the ECA, probably wouldn't be the same way we would use it in other, in other aspects. But I agree with Commissioner Islam that that's a tool I could see us using again.
Anything else?
Nope.
Commissioner Soto, do you want to make any remarks on this item?
No, thanks, but I'm glad that you guys are meeting and studying issues thoroughly. Also scared, but.
Commissioner Collins?
I really liked the consultants available this early. I thought it was very good. I would have also strung it out over a longer period of time and tried to get some of the issues completed in between. I appreciated the work group meetings where we had citizens in at odd hours, where it was convenient for them, where they could sit down and talk to the staff. I also happened to attend, but it's, I thought it went especially well during those times where staff could really explain what was going on to the public. I loved the public involvement there. I cannot believe the mountain of inputs that the public gave to the process. Putting it on the website, making it available to everybody and coding it to the item that it referenced were really good. There's a little bit of tweaking there, so that maybe use hot links or something, so it's a little bit more accessible and perhaps searchable, but the public input was just phenomenal. And that happened, basically, because of the way that the staff did public notice. Right off the get-go, we said, you know, what are all the different ways we can involve the public in this process? And I think the staff really went out of their way to make sure that we did everything that we could possibly think of. Excellent stuff. I'd also very much like to give some kudos to Joe Lipinski. I thought the public comment changing to seven minutes was excellent. I don't think it was abused. Even one of the formal council members used seven minutes instead of three. I don't think it really expanded our meetings all that much, because we didn't have to do them twice a lot of times. Three minutes up at that podium is really stressful for a non-public speaker and seven minutes allowed them to get their thoughts out a little bit better. I also really thought that King County's ordinances, that the consultant provided us, especially fee and lieu, was an extremely useful document and concept. Anything else on my email? I forgot.
Nope, we covered it all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Luxembourg?
Let me repeat something I said before, since I promised to do that, and that was the not writing the code in the meeting, but allowing it to be written with somebody who could spend the time making sure all the different words and the different sections got taken care of and then having it reviewed by several of the commissioners afterwards, I thought went very well. I'd also like to second the idea that having the success criteria was important and that the public comment part worked well, although I would add that we had different methodologies for the public comment and I thought that was a good thing, because sometimes we had testimony and sometimes we had roundtables and we tried to get as much input as we could in lots of different ways and I thought that that was very important. I think, although you can always improve it, the methodology for handling that massive amount of data was very well done. We could actually find the stuff afterwards and we could summarize it. And I think that when you have a big thing like this, you have to think about how to be organized. And again, I'm sure that could be improved, but I think we did a pretty good job of that. I'm looking at my list here. One of the things that the forums did that I was pleased about is that they attempted to make this a fact-based process. And I think that that's important when you have something that's controversial and you have people with different views. You need as many facts as you can to take you as far as those facts will take you before you get to the judgment part. And then lastly, I want to recognize the fact that the forums did a lot of good things for all the reasons that we've heard from the deists here, but one of the things that the forums did is they probably quadrupled the work that the staff had. And several staff members worked very, very hard and very long hours, although that may not have been obvious to everybody, it was very obvious to me. And I think we were very fortunate in the work that Evan did. Thank you, Evan.
Thank you, Evan, yes. So, the only thing that I will add, I certainly would echo everything that everyone said so far, is I really appreciated receiving public comment in writing. Made it very easy for me to go back and review. I very much appreciated receiving that comment prior to the meeting, so that it would give me an opportunity to kind of consume the information and it was helpful to have it summarized at the podium. That was, that was very useful for me, but having it in writing for reference was very helpful. And so, I wanted to recognize the fact that actually, most of our materials were available in advance and I think that was very important to helping us move things along relatively smoothly. Yes, Commissioner Collins?
And for the public, I think they really liked having that stuff available to them on the website also.
That's exactly right. It gave everyone a chance to review the information and to share it in a very public forum. So, that's something that I hope we continue to see. And I think that, I think that's actually, that's all I'm going to say right now. So, I want to move to, you know, what could we have done better or what might we do differently or in addition to what we have done in the past? And I'm actually going to start on the other end this time with Commissioner Collins. Pardon?
Is there enough time?
Well, I hope so. You're the one that wanted to end early, so it's in your hands.
Thank you. I wanted to expand a little bit about what Mabubu said earlier about phasing things in so that we could have a consultant over the long haul. I think we need to group the data a little bit better and say, you know, consultant, you're only going to give us this stuff the first night and then you'll give us something else the fifth night and something else on the eighth night, so that we don't have to digest everything and we're able to see what the public comes back with and what the staff comes back with, so that we can make a decision on what should happen for a workload and then, and then have an opportunity for the consultant to do something with that. Having them pre-staged upfront, there was a lot of benefits to it, but the negative to it was that they weren't around later on and we didn't really get through a topic all the way, so that we could have bounced it off them. I would have liked to have voted closer to the presentation and keep the presentation smaller. That's my biggest, biggest improvement I would, thank you.
Do you have any smaller ones?
I think there's a couple.
I think that you covered, actually, the essence, yes.
Actually, a question in relation to that, what I'm wondering while you are talking about having the consultants involved throughout the process is, would, I guess my question is, what is the contract that you have with the consultant and how that will affect the contract with the consultant?
Yeah, that's definitely an implication that we need to be mindful of. It doesn't, it's.
But what I'm really trying to say is, instead of having the bulk of the work done at one time upfront, just phase it in, so that you can work it.
So, you're not saying necessarily that we needed more of their time, that you would organize it differently?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right. Commissioner Coleman?
Yeah, I would wholeheartedly agree with phasing it. I kind of struggled in my head a little bit about that idea and I think for the ECA process, that definitely would have made sense to at least get through the majority of our policy decisions while the topic is fresh in our head before we move on to the next one. And even if we had to table a couple and come back to it, I think, I think that probably would have helped us overall, because I felt like, you know, every two weeks, it was just sort of this jumble of, here are some topics that we're going to talk about and that just kind of became a little bit confusing. I think one of the other things I harped on at least once was what I like to call version control. And we had a couple of different versions of the public hearing draft and then, and then there was like another sort of addendum and it just became difficult to track all the changes that were happening to the code. So, that just might be something that we, we think about, different, different methods of managing that in the future. Yeah, I think I'll stop there for now.
Commissioner Chair, do you have any questions or anything to add?
No, I don't have any questions.
Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay, good.
Thank you for asking.
You're welcome. Commissioner Islam?
I would agree with all the comments I have heard from my fellow commissioners. On the same topic, I would add, in terms of use of consultants, I felt consultants' way of providing information to us was sort of one-way directed process. I would have liked to have more interactive process, in the sense that one, in one meeting, they could do their PowerPoint that they have done. In the second meeting, they come back, we had a chance to absorb the material and now they're ready to take our questions and engage with us in a more interactive process. I felt understanding of the subject matter was left to us as individuals, more like a classroom format. You get the lecture and then you take whatever you take. Many of us have talked about the subject matter being very technical, the ECA subject matter being very technical. I myself work in that area. Given with that basic knowledge, I felt I really had to go back to a lot of the scientific material from time to time. So, I would say when we have level of service, next topic would be another one of those. We would not have equal level of understanding at the podium, so I would expect if we do use consultants or staff for technical information, make sure that we have an interactive process to be able to ask questions once we have digested information.
Thank you. Commissioner Luxembourg?
I have three things, although truly related. I wouldn't have said this in the beginning, but upon reflection, it seems to me that one of the difficulties is that we commissioners are not experts. Commissioner Islam is an expert in this particular area, but the rest of us are not. And I think we needed more education or different education, because I realized afterwards, when I was trying to read the consultant reports, I didn't really have the technical chops to do it. That's the second part of my input, which is, I think that possibly the consultant reports might have been written for people who had more expertise than we had. And maybe we needed an interpreter or we needed more interaction with the consultants in such a way, so us non-technical people could really appreciate what we're saying and internalize it, so that we would have the foundation to have better conversations. And that's a really hard thing to deal with as we think ahead, but I think we need to give it some serious thought. And that sort of leads me to my other item, which is, we had some pretty good discussions, even though we didn't necessarily agree on everything, and I think the not agreeing part is okay, but I would like to increase the quality of those conversations. And I think if we had, if we understood better, then that would maybe make us, have us be in a position where we could have conversation. One can say, okay, one person is on one side of an issue, another person is on another side, but how do we talk about it in such a way to figure out how to go forward? And I think we, we made a good start, but I think there's still room for growth there.
Do I have a couple of comments? I want to have a little bit more in-depth discussion. I'm not intending to start that just yet, but I want to pull on the thread, so to speak, around this idea of how the information was grouped, how we organized the flow of the process, so to speak. And kind of one question that we grappled with as a leadership team is the policy discussion versus the code. And I know, I personally feel as though we got the code quite late in the process and so I'd like you to think about that, about if, I very strongly agree with Commissioner Luxembourg's point of view, that the policy decision is really the thing that the commission should focus on first before we look at crafting code. But I think I found personally during the deliberation process that the code didn't always reflect the policy in the way that I expected it to and we didn't have the opportunity to have the kind of discussion that I wanted to have about that, because we were in a deliberation process rather than a discussion process. So, I'd like you to think about that a little bit and maybe share your thoughts in a moment. I also feel as though we could have done a better job planning and I own that responsibility to a great degree, but we didn't really know how we were going to do this beforehand. We figured it out as we went to a great degree. And I think the implications of that were some of the things around, you know, the way that are reflected in some of the other comments that people shared, that we didn't know we were going to use an evaluation form until we had already started down a path. And perhaps had we known that earlier in the process, we might have introduced it at a different place in the process, as an example. So, I really appreciate the fact that we, we, I think we did a very good job, but I feel as though a little bit more time in the planning and the orchestration before we even started down the path would have paid some dividends. Related to that, I'm very surprised that we haven't had any feedback about specifically the number of the meetings or the start and end times of the meetings. And Commissioner Islam did kind of allude to the fact that there were several meetings and we did request that the commission not only meet more frequently, but also extend the meeting times. And, you know, I would think that that might be something that we could try to do better, is as part of the planning, you know, plan the work to fit into our standard schedule where we can. And I also wanted to, you know, thank everyone for having some flexibility around that. I think the flip side of that is, I was a little bit disappointed in, in maybe how limited a flexibility we had as a commission. We had a pretty narrow bandwidth of available times for people. And so, for the new commissioners, I just say that to you. We all have other commitments and it's difficult to work around those. So, I not only appreciate people's willingness to do so, I was actually a little bit surprised at how limited that flexibility really was. So, Commissioner Collins?
I just wanted to make a couple of points. I think you did a really good job on conducting the meetings, expanding the meetings and also expanding the time for the meetings. A process like this won't be completed without that kind of dedication. Just the number of meetings that everybody attended, which was, what, 99%?
Mm-hmm.
Speaks to that. I mean, all the commissioners do have schedules that are all over the place and being able to coordinate them as well as was done, just outstanding, just outstanding. Even the offsite meetings, we didn't have 100% participation in those. You can't ever expect that. I mean, there's just so many other things going on, especially with children for the new planning commissioners. Mine are, mine are graduated from college, but I understand what it's like to go through all that. I've. I've, most of us have been there. So I, I, I understand what you're talking about, and I understand that you think you wanted to bring up that you owned it. You owned it in a good way. It was really remarkable what was accomplished.
Well, I appreciate that. I think part of this, though, is in hindsight, that's something that I know we can continue to improve. And so I want to just acknowledge the fact that we do want to continue to improve in that way. Any other comments on this particular, now that we've gone through it once?
I think along the same line, I'll throw out an experience we had, or I could remember. We had a council and planning commission meeting back in February or April time period. And at that time, we were estimating that we would be done by June-
By summer, right.
Or July, or something of that nature. And I knew that, I raised my hand and said, like, you would be lucky if we get it done by the end of the year.
Yes.
So we need more time. So looking back now, and I'm used to the public process, being a federal employee, run very similar processes. As effective as we were, we all attended all the meetings, information was forthcoming, I'm still puzzled and surprised how we took so many meetings to get to the conclusion. So I don't have an answer of what could be more efficient or better, but I just felt if, if I was given some limited resources to get it done, I would not have been able to measure our accomplishment with the time and everything it took on everybody's part. So it is not a criticism in any sense, but more into like, what could be done collectively to make the process better, so that we can have better outcome, or at least equal outcome with less resources that we have taken?
I have a question for you on that comment. Is it the deliberations portion that you were talking about, or the public testimony portion? Because in reality, public testimony took up the bulk of what we did.
As, as I go back, I sort of think, and we all gave those comments already, sort of think that not laying out things in an appropriate way, sometimes when you're deciding policy, if we see code at the same time, then it could be more efficient to see whether policy and code. But I also understand the difficulty of getting there. So I just think those mechanical issues of doing policy first, getting science first, then policy, then code, this, so basically, we had to have the same discussion many, many times. And public also had to share the burden with us to make the same comments many, many times. Not that they really want to make the same comments many, many times, but they needed to make sure that we keep their comments in the forefront.
So we're kind of transitioning into what would we do differently going forward, or what changes would we incorporate? Do we want to start with kind of this, I, I think, Commissioner Islam, your comment about efficiency, I, I definitely share. I felt like, had, again, in hindsight, I, I really were not, I don't want anyone to perceive this as a criticism in any sense of the word, in, in any sense. But I think knowing what we covered and how we covered it, we could have organized it in a way that would have enabled us to cover it more efficiently, not only during the meeting, but through the, the number of meetings. So I, I, I guess we can, do you want, we want to talk about that a little bit, or do we want to just go to specifics? Um, I don't know. Cameron's writing down better all, overall organization. Maybe I'll, I'll go back to Commissioner Collins and changes for the future. Um, you know, maybe we can get into more of a discussion in a moment, but let's capture just the ideas first.
The one, the ones that I'd change for the future is group, group the items in smaller groups-
Okay.
So that you're, you're getting your public testimony on a select thing like wet lens. So, and then work that item, you do the consultant, you do the public comments, you project the workload for the next meeting. The next meeting, you, the council, or the commission should work the issue. You should have your public hearing very quickly thereafter, and then try to get to code.
So take, take each topic closer to the finish line before moving to the next topic?
Yeah. And, and try to be all the way completed with one issue before you go to the next.
Okay, very good. You want to ask any questions or not? Okay, great. Commissioner Coleman?
Uh, the, the one thing I really kind of wish we had early on in this process was something more like a work session, where we got to sit around and just, and just really kind of have a hard discussion about some of the things we wanted to accomplish with the changes in the code. That sort of reflects Commissioner Richardson's earlier statements about, you know, where the, where did the debate really occur? And it was kind of like the debate happened in pieces as we went through the process. And so I think that made it difficult for us to get to an answer. And I was thinking, this, you know, some, some of the policy decisions, we labored on for months, months. Um, and I think that's, that makes it difficult to come to a decision about where you want to move forward, and, and then you start to feel a little bit rushed, too. You know, because it's kind of like, oh my God, we've been working on this for four months, can we finish now? So work sessions, and, and I'll precede this next statement by saying the, the amount of public input that we got was fantastic. But at the same time, we, we, I, I kind of felt like we just needed a chance to think on our own before people started asking us to do something different. And, and I was just thinking about my kids, how they just kind of like, like bawly stuff at me, and I was like, oh, well, hang on, you know? Just, you know, let me think about this, and then I'll tell you whether or not we're going to go out for dinner. Uh, you know, that's a trivial matter. But just, just something about having a chance to kind of, kind of really think as a group, would have, I think would have been, been really helpful. One other thing I think we need to think about as, as a commission, and for the, the future leadership moving forward, is input into the contract as the council starts to work through it. We heard from other commission members about, would have been great if we could have had ongoing consulting roles, maybe, you know, broken that, broken those pieces up differently, so that the presentations happen later. I, I think there was an assumption early on that it was just going to kind of be like, hey, you know, we're going to be done in June, so we're just going to do presentations over two meetings, commission will deliberate for a few meetings, and then they'll make a recommendation. Well, you know, it was, anyway, we, we all know what happened.
Didn't quite work out that way.
Didn't quite work out that way. And I think it would just be helpful from, you know, kind of receiving the direction from the council and understanding what that is, to, to be able to kind of help shape that contract to, so we've got the resources that we need to do the best work that we can.
Thank you. Commissioner Tarrant, do you have any questions or comments?
I actually do. It's a, it's a, it's a more general question about the process. It sounds like this was a very thoughtful, deliberate, fruitful initiative that the commission undertook. I'm curious if there's any framework, so all this feedback is excellent, and I'm sure that Commissioner Sola and I will really benefit, but is, is there a framework to take this feedback and actually codify it and make sure? I guess the thought that I'm trying to communicate here is, how do we prevent mistakes or missteps from reoccurring? Because you guys have already done it once before, how do we ensure success faster?
That's a great question. Actually, so one of the things that we'll be doing is, as we capture this information, is, is it will be shared with the commission and kind of documented for historical perpetuity. And I would hope that future commissions and future commission leadership refer back to this as they're going through a planning process for a new topic. I also personally hope that you, that, that a commission makes a commitment to having a, a retreat of some sort, where these things can be talked about in more specifics relative to the work that you have in front of you. Because I think some of the things that we've, that we've used, some of the tools that we've used are very relevant to certain types of decision-making processes, but not necessarily all of the work that comes in front of this commission. And so I think it would, I think there's an opportunity to tailor your process for every topic, and this should be input to that tailoring, definitely. And you want to add to that?
Well, I only make a comment. I, I guess I've been on the commission two years, and this is the first time we've ever done this kind of thing. So I think doing this in and of itself is step one.
This kind of thing, meaning-
We have to take it further, I agree with you.
You mean there were this type of discussion, or do you mean this-
I mean the retrospective.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted you to clarify.
Yeah, I guess.
All right. Commissioner Islam?
I've been in the commission for a number of years now, been part of a couple of commissions in different terms. What I saw a difference between last time when we did town center development code, and the process was two-year-long during our process. The content of the code obviously was bigger, much, many more things, but many more things were already built out. On this one, I felt because of the subject matter at hand, and what council desired, what citizen desired, the number of major issues that we had to deal with were frankly too many. And, and because of that, we had to draw out the meetings to as many meetings as we had to go through. But I felt there were different times during our commission discussions, or deliberations, or chalking, posturing, whatever the motion was, I felt we were redundant, or at least I could felt that I were redundant, that because another meeting on the same issue, therefore I need to bring up the same discussions again, citizens had to do the same thing again. I'm just wondering, I mean, it, I don't have a crystal ball at this, but I'm wondering, based on what we have seen ourselves doing, how could we make sure we can have, have a cogent conversation? And there is a time when we know that no more additional information is going to help us, we almost know as much as we need to know. And we would have different viewpoints regardless, we are different people. So I just think there needs to be a way for us to learn from the past, so that we don't become redundant and take a lot of time when we know we are not going to change the quality anymore.
Commissioner Luxembourg?
You know, I, one of the things that really resonated with me is something I've heard earlier, the, the difference between, I guess what we would call deliberations and discussions. We had deliberations, but we didn't really have discussions in the way that I think would be the most productive. I think that's what I heard from several commissioners. And I think we need to figure that out. How do we have the kind of conversations we need to have, so that we can explore ideas as opposed to just voting? So I'd like to see us do that. And the other, the other thing is this process thing. I, I've heard from several commissioners some concerns about the process that we used. And I can only say, I would like to have heard those concerns earlier in the process, so that we could have done something about it. And maybe it's inevitable, maybe it'll be learned as we go along, and that's, you know, the best we can do. But I think that's at least something we should all sort of take to heart. And I, I think maybe part of what happened is, maybe not all commissioners were used to the idea of having a, a process in place in the beginning, and didn't realize the significance in the beginning. I know I didn't realize the significance of a number of things, just because I hadn't been through this before in the same way. So it's real clear to me that for something that's really large, like this ECA thing, we need to really focus on our planning part in the beginning, which is something I also heard earlier.
So kind of related to that, I, I want to echo your comment about feedback kind of throughout. I think as a leadership, we don't necessarily know if we're doing well or poorly unless you tell us. So I would definitely encourage people to kind of, you know, if you have a suggestion or idea, don't, don't hold back. And I actually thought of another what went well that I want to capture while we were going through this process. So I just want to kind of go there for a minute, if you'll indulge me. And that is, I really appreciated the fact that we got the code in Word and with track changes. And that made it much easier for, you know, someone who's reviewing the code to see where the changes were. And, and so I just want to thank staff for, for doing that. And I, I think to Commissioner Collins' comment that you made earlier around how we organize the information, I do think there's some opportunities to organize the information a little bit more crisply. I think some of you know that I prefer things in a matrix. And we did some of that, and I would encourage us to do, to do more of that. I have a question around this idea of discussion versus deliberation. One of the things that we tried to do is we moved the commission out of the dais, 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 something, onto the floor, and kind of in more of a roundtable format, as a way to kind of encourage discussion. And I, I think we had some discussion, but not necess, not really the discussion maybe that we needed to have, or felt that we needed to have in the long run. And so I, I'm wondering if it was the, kind of because we were segmented in how we went through this, if that maybe contributed to the fact that we didn't necessarily have the discussion that maybe some of us were hoping we would have? Was that a useful thing or a useful format? I think is the question that I have for commissioners. Do you have comments? Commissioner Luxembourg?
I think that being able to see the other people is helpful, so I think that's a good thing. But I just had sort of an aha as you were talking. And I think part of what our process has been, and this is very complicated, so I'm not sure what's, what's to be done about it. We go down the row as a way of being fair to everyone, that, that we hear from everyone. So that's a good thing, to do that. But one of the things it doesn't do is it doesn't actually create conversation.
Right.
And it's not really intended to create conversation. It's, it's allowing each person to say what they have to say. But one of the things that seems to me to be missing, this was the aha, is there were very few times when someone said, you know, Commissioner so-and-so, could you explain more about X, Y, Z, because I'm not sure I really understood what you meant? We were all sort of compartmentalized. And it would seem, you know, from other experiences, and I suspect everybody down the row would have experienced this in one way or another, when you have seven people, the idea is to make one plus one plus one equal eight. You know, we all build upon one another, but I, I'm not sure we did that.
Commissioner Collins?
I, I really liked all the different formats we had, including the one of sitting in, in the showrooms or whatever it was. I think that's all valuable, and you approach things at a different level. You're, you're worried about different things when you're behind a dais versus sitting at a table across from somebody.
Yeah.
I, I really enjoyed all that stuff. The one meeting I did have, have absolutely, complete wasted time on my, from my point of view, was the meeting where the planning commission and the council took up an evening-
A joint meeting?
The joint meeting. I mean, no offense, but-
Okay.
The, the chair and the vice chair could have gotten a lot more done, just having the council and the chair and vice chair there than, than all the rest of us. I, I just didn't take very much away from that.
Commissioner Islam?
I, I feel something important for us, for me to recognize, though, is that while we desire a great conversation, we want to understand each other's point of view. But because of the, because of our role, our role is such that we are a commission, we are conducting official business, we are composed of a group of people because of our diverse views, it is not going to be always possible, or even desirable, to have a true 7-0 consensus. But I think for me, the goal really is to be able to ask those open-ended questions, so that I understand others' point of view. I may disagree with it, but as long as I understand the point of view, that, for me, that purpose was served.
Commissioner Collins has a comment, but I wanted to give Commissioner Coleman an opportunity to jump in if he wanted to.
Uh, yeah, I like the format that we had out here. That's, that's where I would kind of envision us doing a work session, where we're able to actually engage in the discussion, you know, something not quite as structured as going up or down the line, or starting in the middle and fanning out, or whatever. But, you know, people can just respectfully kind of jump in, and, I mean, just, just like if you're going to have, you know, get together with some people and talk about the hawks.
Politics or religion, right?
Football.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Collins?
The one thing I did want to add to my comment, I'm sorry, I think we should vote more often. When, when the council really expresses a view, and the view is 7-0, 0-7, 6-1, 1-6, even 5-2 and 2-5, there's really not a lot of work that needs to be done there. It's pretty well decided.
So some informal-
The 4-3 and the 3-4s-
Some informal voting, or, oh, okay.
Straw polls.
Straw polls?
I, I'd, I'd make it more formal, because I'd like the public to know where the commissioners stand on things. So if I, if the public disagreed with a commissioner, it could say, can I have coffee with you at some point in time? And, and, and the commissioner would have to justify his position.
What about, would you find value in, I know we had some meetings where there weren't, where there wasn't a quorum specifically, to kind of dig a little bit deeper into questions people had about the code. And this was pretty late in the process. I found that actually very useful, even though the whole commission wasn't there. We did have staff kind of help- We did have staff kind of helping represent some of the people that weren't at a particular meeting to kind of provide some continuity. Would we want to try using that kind of mechanism maybe earlier in the process as a way to kind of suss out some of these things? Thoughts?
What do you mean the meetings that we didn't have a quorum?
So there were...
Were they regularly scheduled?
They were meetings that we had around people's substantive questions about the code.
So they were outside of...
They were outside of the formal commission meeting, yes.
It was a meeting that you and Kathy and Mike had.
Right. Remember in the other room? Yes, you do.
I'm sorry.
So where we had some, there was a list of substantive questions.
Oh, okay, got it, got it.
So my question is, would that kind of meeting be useful earlier in the process? I'm seeing a nod.
I'll give it a couple of words. Yes, and it should happen more often. So like a third of the way through, have one of those.
Not just once, but maybe kind of at key strategic points in the process.
Right, correct.
Because that's also an opportunity to have a little bit of discussion about the process itself. Now, we didn't do it this particular time because we were nearly done, but that's when you could have said, you know, hey, I don't think we should move off of whatever until we get closer to the finish line, as an example.
It was useful for me primarily from the standpoint that I had a chance to talk with Evan one-on-one instead of presentation versus listening. That was really helpful to be able to understand certain things that I wasn't quite getting from reading the material. But I also felt, you know, more meetings, more things, meaning more things on your calendar, unless we protect our timing, there are times where this would be the last thing in my mind to skip a meeting, but I felt it was almost getting to a point, I don't want another meeting just because it will benefit me a little bit, I would still not have another meeting. So I would say like if we do that, we need to be able to come up with a calendar that allows us to do that.
Right.
In a way that it doesn't create a havoc in our life.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah, I would agree. My concern with Commissioner Collins' comment earlier about having them frequently and early is just, you know, not a drain on staff time. That's not the right way to term it, but it's just, it can end up being a lot of staff time because if you're trying to do it in a way you're not having quorums, you've got to have at least three meetings.
True.
You know, and, you know, we met for two hours that one, whatever day that was. So that's just time, and I think it's something that Cameron, as a supervisor, needs to figure out.
So that might be a tool we put in our toolbox, but we only take it out when we have the specific need for it potentially.
Did you want to say something, Commissioner Luxembourg?
Only that, you know, we've just gone through a very complicated change. Not everything that we're going to embark on is necessarily that complicated, although maybe the items that are on our plate are like this. And so we have to size the, we have to size our efforts to, you know, the complexity of whatever it is. I think that this was a good model, and our comments are a good model for complicated things. We might have something that's less complicated that wouldn't require, you know, this level of concentration. If Cameron's shaking his head in a way that tells you that maybe everything we're going to do in the next year is going to be complicated.
Commissioner Collins.
I did have one suggestion about those meetings. I felt like the meetings were set up and they just happened to turn out to have three council members that had views one way meet together, and then another meeting with three council members...
So make sure we have different opinions, mix it up. Got it.
You'll get more out of it quicker.
I agree. All right.
That's a really good suggestion.
Okay, so I want, I feel like we've covered these topics actually pretty thoroughly. I want to know if there's anything that anyone wants to go back to, feels like we need to reinforce or pursue in a little bit more depth.
Yes, I think 415-F.
Oh, no, 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 no. We will have you speak with Guido after the meeting.
You pick that up for me.
Yes, Commissioner Luxembourg.
I did want to ask a question. I heard a suggestion that we ought to have another offsite. Does everybody think that's a good idea?
I personally think it is, especially having two new members joining us. If nothing else, at least we'll build a team that will help us to get through the whole year.
So the alehouse win?
Going back to if there's anything else, I was just ruminating about Commissioner Luxembourg's earlier comment about process and criteria and providing feedback early. Something I've learned to this process that I have not thought about it before is that while you're in the planning stage coming up with a criteria for evaluation, you really don't have a good understanding of what you're going to evaluate. So you're setting an evaluation criteria without a full scope of knowledge, and usually toward the end, now you're able to see the criteria, able to see how things are shaping, you have some ideas in mind, but you cannot incorporate because that's really too late. I just don't know how else you do it, but that's a design of the process. You come up with the criteria too early and then you miss certain things toward the end.
I would suggest that trial runs on smaller topics are a way that you can come up with a better evaluation. So Cara up front, work it all the way through, do the code, do the whole thing, do an evaluation, move on to the next.
Anything else?
I would actually be very curious what staff has to think about all of this.
Yes, we met earlier today and we have a whole lot of sort of foottraps. Well, first I'd echo the compliments, and I appreciate the commission's recognition of specifically Evan, but a lot of people contributed to this on the staff. And, you know, I think you actually did a very good job of this retrospective here. I think these are all very good points. I guess I'd say two things. One, I'd probably add one thing to the what went well list in that I think you were very large, with very few exceptions, respectful to each other and to the public and to staff. And, you know, there are lots of examples of public policy decisions being made at high levels and levels where we are, where that respect is absent. So I applaud you for showing, being a good role model for how public policy can be done in a civilized fashion. Even when issues are tough, people disagree, there's uncertainty, you both created a process to help you work through it, you implemented it in a fair way, you were respectful to each other as people, and that means the next thing that you do can be even better because of that. So my hat's off to you in that sense. Second thing is I do think there are some things we could do better, and some of these things staff can help with. And there's a long list of what we could do better or what we could change for the future. For the meeting, we talked a little bit about whether the commission wanted to get up and maybe express some opinions about that. We do have some colored pens over there, and I think it would help staff to make sure that we can in fact try to deliver on as many of these things as possible to understand what the top priority items are. So a lot of you have done dot exercises. We don't happen to have enough dots sitting around the office right now, but we do have some colored pens. And if leadership wants to do it, I would encourage you to consider it.
I think that would be very helpful. I would actually like to, before we do that, open up the public comment period briefly because that may influence our voting to some degree, as it has perhaps in the past. So if anyone would like to provide public comment, please feel free to step to the podium, and we'll follow the same rules. You have seven minutes, name and address, please.
My name's Jim Osgood, 19661 Southeast 24th Way. I'm going to kind of more or less follow the process that you followed. One of the things that I think that went really well was your commitment to the process. The planning commissioners were amazing, their involvement, the amount of information that you had to or tried to learn in such a short period of time was truly amazing. The other thing that I think went really well was the seven minutes. The seven-minute comment was brilliant because it gave us all an opportunity to really be able to get our entire thoughts out. When I go to the city council, the three minutes, it's brutal. And then they just sit there, and they don't ask questions, unlike you all. You did ask questions, and I do appreciate that too. So from a public standpoint, I think that that was very valuable because that made us feel as though you really were trying to understand what the issue was, what our issues were, and I think that's very significant. The volume of testimony that you took, both from the public and from experts, was incredible. I don't think there's any way in the world a city council can ever say that you all didn't gather enough information for them to make a decision. They're not going to have, there's no way they can go through a process the way that you have. I think that was wonderful. In terms of, oh, actually, no, one other thing too, what went well was picking out the major items to start. The major and minor items I thought was very good because it's a very complicated code, a lot of different issues, and deciding, it's just when something's so complicated, you try to break it down, simplify it, and I think you did that very well. In terms of doing better, I agree, it should have been, if you'd segmented and actually made decisions based upon those segments, it would have been a lot smoother. But on the other hand, for us personally, we probably would, excuse, we would have had some trouble because we weren't aware that we had any trouble until midway through the process, when we had to all of a sudden get our experts and get our attorneys involved to try to work through the process. So if you had done it in three or four weeks, our issue, we wouldn't have been able to get all the information that we needed to get to you. What could have been done better? I think that probably the deliberations or the lack of deliberations as I perceive it, the deliberations, for me deliberations means that you're discussing testimony, you're discussing the facts and making and explaining it in those ways rather than, we heard a lot of opinions, and we didn't hear anything based upon testimony in your deliberations. And I think there's kind of a mixture between discussion and deliberation that, you know, I think was missed. I think the deliberations needed to take a lot more time, but I'm also very grateful that we got through it in a year. Nobody thought that we could even finish it by the end of the year, and we didn't quite, but we almost did. So I feel like this was not only your effort, but I think it was a team effort with the public too, and I do appreciate that. One of the concerns I have, and I think it's more of a policy decision with the city's staff, and that is that they are totally risk averse. They had very little effort in having any concern for property rights, or that was my perception of it. You know, it's, they were always worried about what ecology would think, and they called them in. A perfect example of that would be related to the Gies wetland issue, where Renton went ahead and went to a 4,000-square-foot exemption on isolated wetlands, but the city of Sammamish has to have detailed discussions with ecology beforehand in making that decision. I thought that there should have been a better balance by the city's staff in terms of property rights and environment. And I think that that's pretty much all I have to say, so any questions or...
Any questions, Commissioner Collins?
Thanks for all your participation. You've been one of the stalwarts. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm glad I could be here to finish it off too.
Anyone else, comments, questions?
I want to particularly thank you for coming this evening and sharing your views on the process because that's very helpful to us. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I would like to make a request. I do definitely concur with the Q and A as part of the public comment, being one of the things that did go well, and would like to encourage the commission to continue that practice.
Mr. Sorensen.
Good evening. Excuse me. See if I can get through this. I won't take a lot of time because I think most of my issues have been discussed this evening. I did want to say thank you to the commission for all the hard work. You guys had a boatload of information to deal with, an overload in my opinion, and you did it very well. And Commissioner Richardson, your handling of the meetings I think was exemplary, and I appreciate that very much. I think most of my issues with what went well and what didn't go well and so on have already been stated. The one thing that I haven't heard yet, and I raised the issue probably on a couple of occasions, was that you had a lot of public testimony from people testifying about their own specific problems. And I had asked at least one point to get a list of applicants, frequent applicants to the city that deal with a lot of different projects and just have an overall view of the issues at large. And I never saw that list, I never heard anybody on the commission ask that we gather a group of those people together. There was one public meeting I did attend in the afternoon, which I thought was going to be that kind of a response. It turned out to be three attorneys and their clients, and that was about it. And the meeting itself was basically, in my opinion, it was staff kind of telling them what was going on. It wasn't a lot of information gathering going on there. So you're dealing with a code that is, that has to be used by professionals, architects and developers and builders and so on, and you didn't get their input, in my opinion. And I think that was a big, big hole in the process. I've got other issues, but since this is a public testimony and I'm on the record, I think I'll stop here for now. I would be more than happy to sit down one-on-one or two-on-one with any of the commissioners on an off-the-record basis and go over some of my other concerns as well.
I apologize. Will you give us your full name and address before you...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Bob Sorensen, and I live at 22609 Northeast 2nd Street here in Sammamish.
Thank you.
For the record, I'm not only a homeowner here in Sammamish, I'm also an architect. I work with a builder that does a lot of homes in the city of Sammamish as well as other jurisdictions. And so this process was important to me, and that's why I spent a lot of time here watching the process and participating. So, and again, thank you for your load of work that you did.
Any questions for Mr. Sorensen? Commissioner Collins?
I also wanted to say thank you to you too, Bob. I did want to point out that there was an architect on the planning commission, and I think a lot of your viewpoints were really well heard and discussed among the planning commissioners. They might not have been the decisions that you wanted to come out of it, but I think you had an input, impact on how the discussion went and what the results were. I'd like to think that for the most part, you're happy and that you can feel that you were listened to.
I haven't seen the final draft yet. I can't tell you if I'm happy or not.
We can't control that. That's the city council. They're the paid guys.
I understand.
They're much better than we are. But we really did try to listen to you and all the other pub...
Oh, I'm sure you did.
...public testimony. And we read everything you turned, and I absolutely agree with the chair's preference for written comments. It's just, that was very good. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. I actually have kind of three things, sorry, before we get to voting, so to speak. One is, I just, I'm sorry, I'm speech-making a little bit, but there is a distinction between listening to someone and agreeing with them, and I just want to point that out, is I know often you know that someone's listened to you because they agree with you, but please don't assume that you weren't listened to just because we don't necessarily share your point of view. I know that's an important distinction for me personally. And I do very much value the input that we've had from commissioners and the public and the public agencies and everyone else. Mr. Sorensen's testimony does kind of bring us back to the beginning of where we, the outreach that we did. And I do think we did do that outreach very well. We brainstormed about what outreach could we do, and we went through them, we did as much as we could. But I do also, I think it's a good thing to remind ourselves going forward is, you know, there are many customers of the city, and property owners are definitely one of them, but certainly the people that work with staff or another, and we need to continue to be mindful of our outreach in the future to make sure that we have good representation at our meetings. The other thing that you reminded, for some reason reminded me of, and I think Commissioner Islam may have mentioned this in his minority report, I think we missed an opportunity to ask ourselves how well, what measures did we have of how well the code that we had in place today was working. I don't know that I could say myself personally...
I don't know that I could say myself personally whether I believed that we had, that the code we had in place was protecting the things it was supposed to protect, because I'm not convinced that we were necessarily given specific testimony to that fact. And Commissioners Collins is looking at me with incredulity.
Oh, I absolutely agree.
Oh, okay.
The monitoring just wasn't there.
And so I think we've added some mechanisms to enable future commissioners to have that kind of information, but where it's available, I think that would be very useful input. We have the best available science, but we don't necessarily have as many examples about how the code is working to do the thing that it was intended to do in our city. And so that would be just something to ask ourselves for other similar types of changes. You know, is there information that we have that's relevant to our city or our watershed or what have you about things that either are working or not working in the code the way we intended them to? So that was the only other comment that I'll add. Commissioner Islam, do you want to add to that?
I would very much want to echo that. I think I wrote it down in my minority memo. I felt consultants did a very good job, a good job that they do on things that they're good at. I felt when it comes to Sammamish-specific information, they were really lacking information in their report. They summarized for us in all the jurisdictions and about the best available science from a literature perspective, but not from data and monitoring perspective. We have lakes, we have streams, where we have had data. I felt had that data been shared with us and given some sense of what those data meant would have helped us to get a perspective of how far we need to go, or we are already there, we don't need to go too far, or we're doing a good job, or we are protecting our resources for our grandchildren, whatever that is. But without that basis, I felt I was a little bit lost in terms of the marker that I need to work with.
Very good. Commissioner Sorensen?
Just for clarification, when you're talking about the whether, how the code works, you're talking about the codes that you guys created and the commission created, or the previous code, if there was a code?
The current code. So what we, what our task was, was to take some code that was adopted several years previously and assess it for, and make some recommendations to council about changes based on lots of information, which I won't go into great detail. And I think one area that we lacked information where we would have, I think, benefited from was what, you know, did the dials that we put in place with the code currently, you know, did they need to be turned up or down, or were they in the right place? And so, I don't know, would you like to comment on that, Cameron?
Just briefly, I do think an attempt was made at that process early on, and maybe it just didn't involve the planning commission. It's the group of the known topics. And the council gave direction to the commission and to the staff on the group of known topics, and those known topics, if you look at the list, were based upon the kinds of, you know, how has the code been working? That was a strong input to actually create that list. So we didn't go through a process to report that first to the commission, then go to the known topics and have it come back. We actually just created it, and the council used it to provide that direction. So, you know, maybe that's a lesson for the future, is to involve the commission in that process before we start off, but I think there was an attempt to do that. And just an observation, you know, these last few years, we've been going through not just the ECA process, but the commissioners will remember, four rounds of code blocks. These were all changes to our existing code based on that exact data, based on that exact experience from working with customers, from the staff's reporting of what works and doesn't work and what needs to be reconsidered. So Sammamish, I think, is far from the stodgy, rigid bureaucracy that is unchangeable. We're actually trying to take a proactive attitude towards this, and we've actually made a number of changes. Just note for the record, last time I checked, of the last 50 ordinances adopted by the city council, 37 came through the planning commission. So if you want to think about whether, you know, we're making changes and making mid-course corrections and adjusting, I think the answer is clearly yes. The council is paying a lot of attention to how well development works in this city, and we use a lot of mechanisms, and then we try to deliver on it. Not everything that comes from our customer needs a code change, too, and we don't report this, but we do a lot of work with our customers, our permit customers, as well as the 47,000 other customers that are in the city, to make sure that we deliver good service.
Thank you. Yeah, I think connecting those dots maybe a little bit more clearly is maybe not quite the right word, but helping make sure those dots are connected for us is a good, healthy thing to do. Commissioner Collins?
I really like what the planning commission came up with in its deliberations as far as the monitoring.
I agree.
And that's pretty much the concern that I had. The monitoring that we're passing on to the city council, I think is spot on, and I think Evan did a really good job of drafting those thoughts.
Agreed. All right. So with that, what we'd like to do is, for commissioners, do we want to say three or five?
You mean a number of commissioners?
No. A number of things for them to choose.
Suggestion is three.
All right. So if each commissioner would go and mark the three most important things on each piece of paper, we can start to see kind of where we really want to focus our attention a little bit more closely for future stuff.
And I apologize in advance if my writing is not clear. I'll hover over there and decipher anything that doesn't look like English. And then we have markers, there are four colored ones and some other ones are in blacks and browns. I try to put a bullet point near every thought, so my suggestion is that you put perhaps a small star next to that bullet point, just like a little asterisk, but something that we can clearly see that that's your, one of your top three on that page. Don't underline or add exclamation points or something else. Try to do something that looks like a vote, a smiley face.
Right.
Faces are acceptable alternatives to asterisks. But then you're putting on a number of longer time.
No, people with little kids think about smiley faces.
That's right, yeah.
There you go, you can do a thumb, I want to see you draw a thumb up, though, on the thing. And you're what, please do also, based on the discussion, provide your input as well. And this will kind of conclude the retrospective, so I'll hand the microphone back to Chair Luxembourg when we're done. Yes, Commissioner Islam?
I would like to suggest that since you, Cameron, you have thought that your writing we may not be able to read, it might be easier for you to just read and we'll just thumbs up, thumbs down, and then you can just take based on the thumbs up and down which one has the most.
We don't like that idea. We want to go vote.
Okay, all right. I have to, we have to agree with you.
The kids want to play with the crayons for a little while.
I was just thinking you might be a little faster.
Plus, I think this is a good way to adjourn the meeting on the way out, is that you make your marks and you're done.
Oh, would you like to do that?
That would be fun.
So you need to say it and like hit the-
So I think as the last commissioner leaves, the meeting is adjourned tonight.
Works for me.
Okay.
Am I supposed to do that?
Yes, there, thank you.
Okay. I'm getting distractions.
The planning commission meeting will adjourn at 8:10 PM. Thank you.
That's the question.
We have two minutes.